As a young girl growing up in Sherman Oaks and Granada Hills, she was always drawn to the outdoors. She joined the California Rangers and the Canoga Cavaliers, where she first learned about horses and quickly became enamored by them. Her father thought it would be just a passing fancy and told her, if you want a horse, then you need to buy it. Well, Charlotte took him at his word, and after buying her first car in 1968, she went right back the next day, took out a loan, and bought her first horse. What her father thought would last a month turned into a lifetime passion. And over the years, Charlotte has owned five horses, most memorably Sugar Beast and Cole, and lived by the motto, have trailer, we'll ride. She and her horses traveled everything from Griffith Park to Mammoth to Big Bear to Vasquez Rocks, the deserts, and far beyond. She competed in the trial trails, where she, oh, trail trials, sorry, where she and Beast excelled in tackling real-world challenges on the trail. In 1981, Charlotte joined the ETI Corral 54 in Chatsworth. Many of its members stand behind me today. And then, over the next 44 years, she served in nearly every role of that organization, from secretary to president, and for nearly four decades, the trail coordinator. She became a tireless advocate for trails, access, and horse property, working with our office, CD-12, and county departments, community groups, and fellow riders to protect the equestrian way of life in the northwest San Fernando Valley. Most recently, she even helped secure trail access through the Deer Lake Highlands Housing Project, a major victory for riders in my community. Charlotte's leadership extended beyond our community as well. She chaired ETI's National Trail Trial Committee, standardizing rules that gained national recognition, and she literally co-wrote the book on how to organize a trail trial. For me personally, Charlotte has been an invaluable partner. Every year, we have an annual Ride with the Councilman, where I ride with ETI Corral 54, and she's been either in the saddle beside me or behind the camera capturing the pictures of the day, and always, by the end of the ride, handing me a punch list of what needs to be fixed on our trails. So whenever my office takes on an equestrian project, Charlotte is one of the first people I call, and her insight has always made the project stronger. Charlotte, your dedication, compassion, and leadership have left a permanent mark on this community. While we are sad to see you leave the valley, you know, you're leaving the valley to move to Michigan, we are deeply grateful for everything you've done for the equestrian community and, of course, Council District 12. Colleagues, I'd like a warm welcome, if you join me, and a warm welcome for our guest of honor today, Charlotte Brody.
He's told me to tell how great he is. I have had the pleasure of working with several councilmen, and it has been a real challenge to accept them, to see my way of thinking. But I have convinced them, for the most part. And I really have enjoyed this job, although when I get in front of a microphone, I'm scared to death. And so I usually have words to read, and I don't have any words to read, so I'm just faking it. Yes, so there were things I thought of in the night, but those have disappeared with the day. So I can't tell you what I could tell you, because I don't remember. I don't have my little notes. But I have enjoyed this, and I've had a great support from the councilman, him and before. And I just am grateful for getting things done that I needed to get done. Two things I didn't get done, no.
I'm sure you'll remind me what those two things are.
I have, several times.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee. We've got a member on the queue, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and thank you, Charlotte, and all of the enthusiasts that have joined you here this morning to celebrate all of your incredible contributions here in our beautiful San Fernando Valley. As the co-conspirator of all things equestrian on the council with Councilmember Lee, I want you to know that some of the work that we're actually pioneering in my district is Trails Master Plan and a great deal of work of incorporating trails as fire breaks to help mitigate a lot of the fire risk in our hillside communities. So I'm really proud to be working and leading on that work and partnering with Mr. Lee on that, because it's an important opportunity for us to combine and have the shared open space for our equestrian riders that are safe, because we know, I know in my district sadly, we've seen a lot of individuals become injured and sadly, horses lost as a result of just crossing on the streets. But we're doing a lot of that work, and I just want to say thank you for your advocacy, all the ETIs that are heavily involved in advocating for this work. But thank you so much for helping to be a strong voice in that, because what is uniquely, not just the San Fernando Valley, but uniquely Los Angeles, and frankly, an important part of western history of California, is that we can't ignore the contributions and the history and the part of all the equestrian activities that helped to develop not just California, but Los Angeles. So I want to thank you for your work and your advocacy, and best wishes to you on this next part of your journey.
I live in your district.
Okay, terrific.
Barely.
But she complains to me, yes.
Barely in my district.
You reminded me of the two things that I was going to mention, a always stop at Rinaldi and De Soto.
Gotcha, okay.
And a button that lets the people coming south on Reseda Boulevard know that there's somebody crossing to catch the trail on the other side of Reseda Boulevard.
John, I'll show you how to do those.
You see, to the very end, even as we're saying goodbye, she's advocating for the equestrian community. Charlotte, believe it or not, I will miss the times of our rides and when you talked very sternly to me about what needed to be done in the equestrian community, what had to be done for our trails. Because deep inside, I always know that you were fighting to keep the equestrian life that is so incredibly important to Chatsworth and to all the people standing behind me. And to that, I just want to say thank you, and how much we will miss you. And her daughter's moving with her, too.
Not with me, but in the same state. Not with me, no, no, no.
So Charlotte, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles
My shirt.
And Council District 12, I want to say thank you to you and present this city certificate, signed by all the council members, to thank you for your incredible advocacy for the equestrian community. Thank you, Charlotte.
Well, now it's on record, the two things you need to do.
Everybody come and squeeze in.
All right, another round of applause. And our next presentation will celebrate more of our western heritage here in the City of Los Angeles. Councilmember Ramon of the 4th District.
Thank you so much. Wow, this is very loud. Thank you so much for giving us a chance to recognize the Autry Museum. Co-founded in 1988 by Jackie and Jean Autry and Joanne and Monte Hill, the Autry Museum of the American West is located right in Griffith Park. And if you haven't been there, I encourage you to go there. I encourage you to take younger children there. It is a delightful museum with a lot of activities. It's right opposite the zoo, and it can help you cool off and learn a lot about the history of this region and our connections to the broader American West. Originally named the Jean Autry Museum of Western Heritage, this museum is undoubtedly one of the city's biggest treasures. A legendary recording artist and movie star Autry earned the title of America's favorite singing cowboy, and he's best known for his Christmas holiday songs, Here Comes Santa Claus, Frosty the Snowman, Rodolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. He has five stars on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, which is incredible. And he had a dream to build a museum which would exhibit and interpret the heritage of the West and show how it influenced America and the world. His wife Jackie currently serves as the founding chair and life trustee of the Autry Museum. And their legacy in Los Angeles and the legacy of the museum itself, I think, is a really essential one and one that I hope many more city residents will engage with. The Autry Museum is home to an incredible collection, paintings, sculptures, Hollywood western film memorabilia, saddles, some of which kids can even sit on, photographs, historical objects, and so much more that tell the story of the American West. The Autry holds hundreds of thousands of pieces of art and cultural objects, including, and this is really important, I think, for us at a moment where history, the very history of this nation, is being challenged, including one of the nation's largest and most important collections of Native American cultural artifacts. But the Autry isn't just a museum. It's a place where the community comes together, especially because of its location, very special location in Griffith Park. It plays a critical role in connecting visitors from near and far to the West's natural and cultural landscape. There are live music nights there. There are film screenings. There are family-friendly festivals and hands-on workshops. There's always something happening at the Autry. They host beloved events like Sizzling Summer Nights, the American Indian Arts Festival, National Day of the Cowboy and Cowgirl, and Street Food Cinema Movie Nights. The Autry also has a deep commitment to education, and they welcome thousands of K-12 students for tours, lessons, and outreach programs that bring history and culture right into classrooms across Los Angeles. At the helm of this incredible institution is a very special individual, Stephen Aaron, who became president and CEO during a fairly tough time for museums, 2021, after a distinguished career as a history professor at both Princeton and UCLA. So please join me today in giving a very warm welcome to the president and CEO of the Autry Museum, Dr. Stephen Aaron.
Thank you so much for that wonderful introduction and for the very welcome invitation to say a few words about the Autry Museum of the American West. I'm really tempted, though, just to say what she said, because she really covered most of what I would like to say. Other than, I want to say a few words about a couple of upcoming events, as well as an exhibition that we have on view right now and on view through the end of the year. That's Black Cowboys: An American Story. Did you know that one quarter of the cowboys on the trail in the decade after the Civil War were of African-American descent? You probably didn't if you spent your life watching Hollywood westerns, which whitewashed them out of the picture. Our exhibition brings them back into the story. But more than just, and this is true, I think of most of the exhibitions at the Autry Museum, more than just an exhibition about out there and back then, it's also very much an exhibition about here and now. And indeed, it's an exhibition that could not have been created without our community partners here in Los Angeles in particular, with Compton Cowboys, with Urban Saddles, and with other community groups that were integral to showing the ways in which this is not just a matter for history. It's also something that very much is part of Los Angeles today. And much of the exhibition, in fact, focuses on Los Angeles and on Southern California. And indeed, that, I think, is reflective of the Autry's commitment to be a museum, as our title says. We are a museum about the American West. But if it weren't so wordy and weren't so clunky, I'd like to add, and we've had some name changes already, so I'd like to add that we are also, maybe we should be called the Autry Museum of Los Angeles and the American West, because we are very much a museum that connects Los Angeles to the wider world and the wider West. We're very much a museum that sees Los Angeles as a window through which we can look out on a wider world. We're very much a museum that understands Los Angeles to be the westest West. And that's integral to all of our programming, including the Black Cowboys: An American Story exhibition, which, as I mentioned, is on view until the end of the year. If I could have you all come one day this year, one day, I'd ask you to join us at our annual block party, which this year will be on Saturday, September 27, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. This year in particular, not only are we opening ourselves up to the community in the ways of engaging with our community partners, as we try to do regularly, but this year, we're going to honor our first responders, our local heroes who did such magnificent work during and in the aftermath of the fires last January. Will be free for military, for veterans, for children under 12, and for all first responders. And in fact, for first responders, all first responders who come to the museum for our annual block party that day, you'll be able to see, or they will get a one-year annual family membership to the Autry Museum, complimentary from us. So really, as I say, please join us on the 27th. Please come see the Black Cowboys: An American Story exhibition. And please come to celebrate with us the history, the culture, the stories, the art of the peoples of Los Angeles and of the peoples of the West. Indeed, our mission statement is to bring together the stories of all peoples. And I really think that's special to the Autry. And on the 27th, we certainly will be trying to bring people together. So please join us at the Autry Museum in, of, and for Los Angeles and about the American West. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Aaron. And before you step away, we want to make sure that we are giving you this certificate on behalf of the L.A. City Council, signed by all of the members. And I just wanted to say one other thing, which is, I had never ridden a horse before I started in this role in L.A. City Council. But I represent areas that are equestrian centers. I represent the Equestrian Center in Griffith Park and have a big horse-riding community. So I was really excited to see, Mr. Lee, your presentation from this morning. And the equestrian tradition here in L.A. connects your part of our city to Griffith Park, to Compton, to South L.A. Like, it is an incredible tie that brings us all together. And I think all of that finds its weaving together in this exhibit. And so I really want to encourage everyone to come, because I do think it is truly a museum of Los Angeles. And I just want to make sure you are all invited. And if you go, it's free for you, because I'll pay for you. Okay, okay, thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. All right, now we have a presentation led by Councilmember Nazarian of the 2nd District.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning. And from the western culture of cowboys and equestrian riders to the eastern culture, gives me great pleasure this morning to recognize Wat Thai of Los Angeles and the incredible educators who are part of the Temple's 2025 Summer School Volunteer Teacher Program. Wat Thai, also known as Televada Buddhist Center, is the largest Thai Buddhist temple in Los Angeles and has been a cornerstone for the Thai-American community here for over five decades. Since its establishment in 1971, it has served not only as a place of worship, but also as a vibrant cultural hub hosting major celebrations. You can come over any Sunday morning to Council District 2. But also as a vibrant cultural hub hosting major celebrations such as Songkran, Visakh, Puja, and the birthdays of Thailand's king and queen. I know my pronunciation, you'll correct me later. Beyond its religious and cultural role, Wat Thai also offers language classes, music and dance lessons, and even culinary programs, helping preserve and share Thai traditions with Angelenos of all backgrounds. One of the temple's most important contributions is its Summer School Volunteer Teacher Program, which brings visiting professors and lecturers from Chulagokron University in Bangkok to Los Angeles. Each summer, these teachers dedicate their time and expertise to educate Thai-American youth in language, music, dance, and cultural traditions through which students get to not only strengthen their skills, but also deepen their pride of their heritage. Today, we're proud to recognize eight remarkable teachers who have traveled here to volunteer their time and knowledge. And I also want to acknowledge five other dedicated teachers who unfortunately couldn't be with us today, but were here throughout summer and supported all these efforts. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to all of you. Your commitment to education, cultural exchange, and community service strengthens the bonds between Los Angeles and Thailand and ensures that our future generations will carry forward the language, traditions, and values that make the Thai-American community so vibrant. Thank you for your dedication. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition and safe travels back home to Thailand. And we look forward to having you back again soon. I'd like to also turn over now and welcome the temple coordinator, Sumana Barua, to say a few words on behalf of the Wat Thai Temple of Los Angeles.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Wat Thai of Los Angeles and myself, we'd like to thanks and appreciate to allow us to come to participate at this wonderful assembly here. Wat Thai, it established 50 years now, more than 50 years, at the North Hollywood. So we have served Thai community and also other communities in Los Angeles. And also, the Wat Thai is the first Thai Buddhist temple in America. So because of that, it important and it performance is very significant and very, very wonderful service we have done for many years. So in this purpose, we also have many activities that we do at the temple, not just only the religious, but also for other things, just as for culture and also other meritorious activities to the community itself. So we have an education program that Wat Thai provide and give to our community people, especially Thai-American, that we like them to learn Thai language and also Thai culture, both in Thai classical music and dance, and also Thai arts. So that is, we like to emphasize our children's to learn about who they are, what their heritage. In the same time, we also like to preserve an American value itself. So today, we are here to bring our volunteer teachers from Thailand, especially for the summer program. And we have seven summer program teachers from Thailand. And we also have another group of volunteer teachers. They go to serve for one year. We call them one-year volunteer teacher. At Wat Thai, they will live with us for one year. So we also bring them to here as a witness, to see what is going on. So last, not the least, we like to thank all of you, and we very much appreciate. And thank you for giving up opportunity to come to present a few words in this wonderful atmosphere and program. Thank you. And I would like to introduce teacher Ratchapong. He is going to be introduced, all the eight, seven volunteer teachers.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is my great honor to be here today, representing the Summer Volunteer Teacher Program, 41st co-host and the faculty of education, Chula Longkorn University, Thailand. Allow me to introduce our volunteer teachers, our head teacher, Ms. Pahn Pimon Siriwat. And me, Ratchapong Madhuran. And Ms. Ratchayaporn Kamthi Shit. And Ms. Isuriyaporn Gon Gao. And Ms. Nitha Kamthawi. Okay, and Ms. Suriwimon Siritha Patharawong. And Ms. Surapah Bunyasiri. Together, we have been entrusted with the mission of teaching Thai, language, and culture abroad. Over the past three months, we have had to privilege of teaching Thai-American children here at Wat Thai of Los Angeles, California. This opportunity has been truly meaningful and invaluable, allowing us not only to share knowledge, but also to strengthen cultural bonds across generation and across the world. On behalf of volunteer teacher, I would like to express my deepest gratitude to everyone who has supported us, guided us, and welcomed us with such a kindness. It has been an honor to serve, and we will carry this memory and experience with us forever. Thank you so much.
While you're preparing the certs, we have a member on the queue, Councilmember Padia.
Good morning, everyone. Councilmember Nazarian, I want to thank you for bringing this great presentation here today. The Thai temple in Sun Valley really is one of the greatest assets in Sun Valley. You know, I heard you all talk about that it's a place for not just the spiritual, but also for the reconnecting with your culture. And, you know, not a lot of folks know about the Thai temple, and it's always surprised me, because for me, it's a place where I grew up in with my friends and my Thai friends, as well as my Filipino friends. A month doesn't go by in my everyday life where something related to the temple doesn't come up. You know, I have friends and family that are like, hey, it's Sunday, we're going to go eat at temple. You want to come? That's very much a part of connecting with the culture, right? And also with my friends, growing up, it was always a place for them to invite us, their non-Tai friends, to come and learn about the culture. So it's a place that, to me, has a very special place in my heart. I thank you for the work that you do. And I kind of giggle, like, hearing that you're here to teach the children how to speak Thai, because that was always the joke even amongst my friends and each other, who speaks the better Thai? Who's going to temple and actually trying? And it was, you know, fun and games between them, and we got to enjoy that. So thank you for what you do. We very much love you here in this community. You've been here for a long time. So, Mr. Nazarian, great group to honor today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to close up, I invite any one of you and all of you to come and join me on a Sunday morning tour, as Councilmember Padia said. You can't help but to really enjoy that colorful, gleeful, and ornate visual. You can't help but to really enjoy that colorful, gleeful, and ornate visual that the temple provides when you're driving, traversing either east or west on Roscoe, or north or south on Coldwater Canyon, and come across upon it. It is beautiful, and it's like a little hidden gem that appears out of nowhere. So please join us there, and thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian, and congratulations. We'll all now move to public comment. Clerk and city attorney can prepare us.
Public comment has been satisfied for all items today. So members of the public may speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to anything within the city's subject matter jurisdiction. We will tell you when your time is up. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as possible, and if you are speaking to something that is not within the subject matter jurisdiction, we'll warn you to get back on topic. You'll get a brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to immediately and clearly get on topic onto something that's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. If you do not do so, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker.
I will begin by calling the following names, Boxer, Canado, Christine Musetti, Christy Adair, Dan MJ, and Danica Middleton.
Hi, I'm Christy, oop, it's loud. I'm Christy Adair. I am a Sherman Oaks resident, and I took my first cert class in 2001. We live in earthquake country, and I believe it's important that people can take care of themselves after a disaster. If you look at significant disasters around the world, the cities that recover most quickly economically and emotionally have citizens who are prepared and leaders who have helped them. So I want to thank Unicece Hernandez, Council District One, for authoring a motion, CF-25006-S41, which allows $50,000 towards cert training and supplies in her district. I'd also like to thank Nithya Ramen, Council District Four, for working with her cert coordinators in her district to have monthly meetings. These regular meetings are essential, because community members can come together, practice cert skills, and it's happening all over the city of Los Angeles. We have cert coordinators who, oop, thank you.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Danica Middleton, for information, Secretary Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council. I am asking Councilmember Padia why she is continually ignoring the requests of her stakeholders. Councilmember Padia is well aware from the very beginning that Lake Balboa and Encino stakeholders oppose the construction of Metro's 248 apartment units and Link Housing Corp.'s 17100 Victory Boulevards, 194 affordable housing units, both affecting the intersection of Victory and Balboa Boulevards. Both the mayor and the Councilmember Padia failed to take into consideration that right across the street are seven schools, not one, but seven, with a collective student body of 6,000. This would affect the parents and the students on a daily basis. This Councilmember Padia had made an agreement with Birmingham Principal that his foster students would get a handful of those units. This is shady. They did not take into consideration how it would affect the community. There will be a student killed by massive amounts of traffic.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call the following names, Dean Wageman, Donna Peirman, Gwendolyn Flynn, Jennifer Clark, Jessie G., and Jim Stein.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christine Musetti. I live next door to Birmingham High School. I have handouts for all the council members, for public record. Thank you. First off, I'm against the Victory Boulevard housing project that's on, obviously, Victory Boulevard. I understand that most of the city staff is overwhelmed with all the streamlining approvals of the housing, but our councilwoman, Melba Padia, who is not sitting there right now, appears to be having her dual roles, which allows these projects to slip through without proper care for our community. And you all depend on each other to have the communities back and realize that you know what's good for the community. And for this project, it's just the wrong location. It's right across from Birmingham High School. They're gonna plan on using the same crosswalk that the kids use. And I, as the handout I gave you, you'll see a picture of all the kids, and I just feel like it's the wrong location. I live in the neighborhood. Thank you. Let's keep Lake Balboa the green gem it is.
Thank you very much, Council. Public comment.
You have one minute.
Once again, let's beat up Padia Day. These people that are talking about the Balboa issue, I wish they would read the court order by Judge Carter. Are you telling that Padia needs to breach and cause contempt for the city for breaching that court order? It appears that these young ladies have not read it. If they would like to have a copy, I'll be glad to send to them free of charge, but it's not Beat Up Padia Day. Another issue I want to talk about was the interview on Wednesday of Padia. I did a Public Records Act request, in which I received some information, based on information and belief, about Ramen. Ramen, you call Padia placeholder after you set her up on that interview? Someone, someone on your staff said the word that she's considered just a placeholder.
My name is Jennifer Clark. I'm the Vice President of North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, speaking as an individual. Approximately seventy percent of Angelinos are not prepared for the next emergency. As we head into National Preparedness Month in September, I'm requesting that City Council do more to financially support CERT. I completed the seven-week training in February and found it incredibly valuable. Unfortunately, funding is always a concern for this program. I request that each of you designate some of the discretionary funding to support and promote CERT in your districts. And then as a side, I know there's no public comment on Agenda Four, but I'll put a part of my general statement, is the committee recommendation is to note and file the CIO report, which includes status on nine key performance indicators. Many of the indicators are tied to data that has been shown to not be fully available, transparent, or accountable to the funding received for homelessness services. I request that each of you spend time reviewing the data before voting to extend this emergency declaration for yet another quarter after this many years. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I will call up the following names, Joey Johnny G., Karen Schatz, Kathy Schreiner.
Good morning, councilmembers. Councilmember Padia has failed Lake Balboa. Hundreds of petitions, years of opposition, dozens of meetings ignored, and still she voted yes on a project we oppose, pushing for extra funds for herself. This is not leadership, it's betrayal. She could have listened, abstained, or voted no, but she voted politics and personal gain over her constituents. Who benefits? Not us, the landowner, the developer, apparently herself. She holds private meetings with other neighborhoods while ignoring the people who elected her. Our community plan calls for infrastructure improvements on public land, not favors for outsiders. Councilmember Padia, the residents are watching. Stop betraying us. Start representing us, or step aside. Thank you.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Gwendolyn Flynn, Lake Balboa homeowner and member of, stakeholder member of the Neighborhood Council in Lake Balboa. Councilmember Padia, you have, you have lost your way. You have betrayed the people of Lake Balboa. You have lied to your constituents, ignored petitions, and allowed conflicts of interest to control your decisions. You claim to lead, but all you've done is to serve yourself while harming our community. Your inaction, your deceit, and your self-interest are disgraceful. You do not deserve the trust of the people, and you do not deserve to hold office. Lake Balboa deserves real leadership, honesty, integrity, accountability, all things you have repeatedly failed to show. We will no longer be silenced. For the good of this community, we ask you to step aside immediately.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Yeah, Donna Periman. Okay, if you have a meeting, they will come. People in the San Fernando Valley should have the right to speak without going downtown. We should have fair and honest elections where our politicians are elected, not selected. Metro projects approved with little public input. Light rail project on Van Nuys Boulevard takes away parking on one street and one lane of traffic, and, and buses, and making it, hurting our businesses and making it hard for disabled and seniors. And so make it ten minutes faster. And Ms. Padia has also a housing project where not only they do housing, but they have totally take care of these people, food and medicine and healthcare, with no plans on having independence. All this with very little input. She has not gone over there to try to really find out what the people want. They, they have a very little show what they have after they decide everything they want. Then they allow people.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call the following names, Kevin G. Davis, Lei, Lake Balboa, and C. Linda Gravani Manningham.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Yeah, my name is Karen Schatz. I've lived in Lake Balboa for thirty-three years, been on the Neighborhood Council and on the Land Use Committee. I'm here to say what others have said, to say it very clearly, that Councilwoman Padia has not been serving her community at all. Things go through, we have no ability to talk about it, to have any concessions, to have any knowledge of what the neighborhood is like, and we are really, really, really tired of it. And I'm just here to say that the constituents are looking at this, and we are not willing anymore to be ignored.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Thank you. Linda Gravani, President, Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council, elected to represent our 50,000 stakeholders. Our community vehemently opposes two destructive projects on Victory Boulevard. One hundred ninety-four units proposed are directly across from the Birmingham School Complex, serving 6,000 students. Instead of protecting our students, Councilmember Padia motioned to authorize $45 million to help fund this unsafe project. The illegal dumping and oversized RV parking issues in Sun Valley are now being dumped into Lake Balboa, again, across from our schools on the G-line parking lot. There is zone salvage yards for their, these RVs. The 248-unit Metro planned housing project on public facility will add massive traffic. Please stop ignoring the community, and please start representing us. I have my own personal comment. May I do that now?
Speaker, your time is up.
Your time is up. You, we're gonna go to the next speaker. Your time is up. You're disrupting the meeting.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up the following names, Mark Dutton, Maya, Piper M., Richard Serrano, and Rommel M.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Johnny G., good morning, councilmembers. May Mr. Richard Serrano rest in peace. A community advocate who loved his community and the people of Los Angeles. He was a kind and generous man. He was always ready to assist his fellow Angelino. He just passed away this last week. He wasn't here to make noise. He was here to make changes. John Lee, it's a disappointment what you allowed in Porter Ranch. Are you proud of yourself? It's so dangerous to go up Reseda Boulevard, and one day, a fire will be worse than the previous ones in Los Angeles.
To Mr. Richard Serrano, God bless you. You were here for the right reasons. I want to thank for honoring the Autry Museum. I had two of my water colorings by C.M. Russell displayed there, so it's a great place to visit. Quickly, this is two streets up in Porter Ranch. This one is off Mason. Guess who lives right above it? Who lives there, right? This is the street that I've lived up in for forty years, and that we did everything to keep it clean, but now it looks like a, it looks like hell. It looks like Alvarado Street downtown. Poles, light poles are down, trash is everywhere. You can't walk a horse over there. You're gonna get hit by a car. Mr. Lee, I am challenging you to fix that. I don't know, oh yeah, you laugh, you laugh. You think you have the Korean community behind you? You think you're in. This suit, see this suit, sir? I bought it. Nobody gave it to me. I didn't have to bend over for anybody.
Speaker, your time is up.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call the following names, Sean Murphy, Seba Stacy Segarra Bolinger, and Stefan.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Good morning, Council. My name is Kevin Davis, President of the Foothill Trails Neighborhood Council, but speaking as a private citizen. Thank you for coming out to the valley. Your presence is greatly appreciated, but I urge the Council to schedule a regular meeting in the valley without the need for a request every month. Forty percent of Angelinos live in the valley, yet of the up to fourteen meetings held every month, having a single meeting outside of City Hall is not enough. The valley deserves more than seven percent of your time. Councils should have more field trip meetings, too. I would encourage them to schedule meetings in other areas as well, such as San Pedro, such as East LA, so the Council has a better feel for what's going on in the community. You should also consider holding meetings outside of normal business hours. I had to rearrange my schedule to be here today, but Angelinos cannot. Since a bulk of the public comment is down at the committee level, the Council should reconsider allowing the committee meetings in the evenings, as well as allowing remote comment. Should also consider adding a second mic to public comment. This will allow speakers to present once while the other one is setting up, therefore moving the process along faster.
Speaker, your time is up.
Before the next speaker comes up, I would like to call the following names, Sun Valley Maria, Sun Valley Nancy, Sun Valley Maria Moore, Tony M., and Wendy Keel.
Speaker, you have one minute.
General public comment. Public, when you hire clowns, you get this city council circus of corrupt incompetence. Sleazy Marqueezie Dawson has absolutely no items on today's agenda again. What a clown. Sleazy Marqueezie Dawson, CD8, has the highest incarceration rate, CD8, the highest homeless rate, the highest unemployment rate in the entire United States, over twelve and a half percent. CD8 is a near-complete food desert. Sleazy D. has spent over $10 million on luxury offices for himself, while tens of thousands are homeless. Dawson, who appointed by petty, pink-faced corrupt Armenian dictator, Paul Kluklukskrakorian, a legendary fool. Criminally insane Kern Prouse has been indicted on additional charges for voting on his wife's city contracts and polygamy. $1 billion budget emergency, homeless epidemic emergency, 275 billion fire damage emergency, and Sleazy D. and his 20,000. All right.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Yeah. Why are we eliminating items every Friday now? Oh, I used to like this, Council. God, you need to change your ways, Mr. President. I didn't elect, I didn't elect you last year. I mean, come on. You're eliminating items, you're... You're eliminating items, you're throwing people out because they use a bad word. That's not right, Mr. President. You need to straighten up and fly right. And I'm very angry with the way they're deporting people. I'm an Irish. I'm Irish. I worry every day if I'm going to get deported.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Thank you. Hello, Council. My name is Stefan Smith. I'm a 12-year resident of Lake Balboa and put a lot of sweat equity into our community and we cherish it. Amilda Padilla has not looked out for the best interests of our community. We have 194 units that I oppose and the community oppose, and we also oppose the Balboa Station with proposed 100 RVs, homeless campers, and 248 units. Victory is a very busy thoroughfare and it is not safe putting up all this congestion and construction, and we would like more transparency and communication in going back and saying that you're not supporting a project and then going behind our backs and asking for $45 million to help fund a project that you told us in our face that you do not support and it's due to AD1 that is being built. So we need transparency and someone to support us. Thank you.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call the following name, Carmen.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Yes, hi. My name is Wendy Keel. I'm a member of the North Hollywood Neighborhood Council, but I want to speak on behalf of, as a resident of North Hollywood, I have two issues. One is the proliferation of Airbnb in my neighborhood in North Hollywood where houses are being bought by developers. The house is cut into two units, they add an ADU, and they are rented full-time for Airbnb, thus turning our neighborhoods into hotels. This is illegal. They shouldn't be running businesses. We need this housing to be long-term residents, particularly given in the fire and the housing shortage, not as hotels for tourists, but residents. We have an ordinance that prohibits this and it is not enforced. The second issue I want to talk about is trees. Don't plant any more trees. You don't take care of the ones you've got. They've gotten to be a nuisance. There's no money for our people to cut and trim their living things. They fall on sidewalks, they fall on cars, they ruin fences. Don't plant more without taking care of the ones you have.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Nancy and I'm from Sun Valley. I don't know if Ms. Padilla is aware, she says she's from Sun Valley, I'm from Sun Valley as well, that 10 years ago approximately, Sun Valley opened up a homeless center that brought outside people, that ruined the entire park. There was drug use, there was homeless people invading the entire park, it was unavailable to the children, to the community. It was horrible. I don't know how long it took to clean that up. It was drug-infested, a horrible mess. The Tiny Homes Project is way too close to the park, the elementary school, the neighborhood, the community, and public transportation. You're bringing this to our community without our consent. We don't want this. We would not take it into consideration. Why? Because there's a homeless crisis and we can just do it. We don't have to ask for community input. That's not right. We elected you to represent us and you're not representing us. You are not representing what we want. The Branford Tiny Homes is down the road and is surrounded by RVs, proof that the Tiny Homes are not working. Where's the data showing that the Branford Tiny Homes is servicing people? The RVs in Sun Valley on Roscoe, Vinndale, and San Fernando Road are growing.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Mi nombre es Maria Luisa Jakess.
Good morning. My name is Maria Luisa Jakess.
Tengo 58 años viviendo en San Valley.
I've been living in San Valley for 58 years.
Me opongo firmemente al proyecto de las Tiny Homes.
I'm firmly against the Tiny Home Project.
Que planea poner en nuestra ciudad la concejal Imelda Padilla.
That it's planning to be installed in our city by Councilmember Padilla.
Poniendo en riesgo inmediato a familias y negocios.
That it's a huge risk for families and businesses.
Planea poner 215 casitas y 415 desamparados.
They plan to create 215 tiny houses and include in them 415 homeless.
Este proyecto no debe anular las ordenanzas y normas.
This project should not annul the ordinances...
De uso del suelo existente.
Of how the soil should be used.
Solo porque enfrentamos una emergencia.
Not only because we are in an emergency.
Las comunidades de justicia ambiental y los vecindarios.
The communities of environmental justice and the neighborhoods.
Requieren estándares más estrictos, no excepciones.
They require strict standards, not exceptions.
Las acciones apresuradas del consejo.
Rushing these actions by the council.
Ignoran preocupaciones legítimas de seguridad.
They ignore legitimate worries regarding security and safety.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call the following name, Mark Dudden.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Good morning, Council. I'm here today to express deep concerns regarding the Tiny Home Project imposed on MetroLink Sun Valley Station by Councilmember Padilla. I agree with the rest of the people. This project was poorly planned from the get-go and it's a decision that affects a community now disproportionately impacted by homelessness and persistent public safety challenges. Converting this site without careful analysis or meaningful input places additional burdens on a vulnerable environmental justice community. Locating the first Tiny Home Unit within 100 yards on the map of existing residences raises serious public safety concerns for families, businesses, commuters, and schools. Our experience with similar projects in other neighborhoods shows increase in violence, crime, and vandalism, which only further undermines the daily peace and security of our communities. It is discriminatory and inequitable to concentrate such facilities so close to residential areas and local businesses. Thank you.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Carmelina Minasova, as a President of Human Rights and Resident District 6 of Panorama City, I just want to say we hear the news of Richard Serrano. He's very active and we'll be missing him. Regarding for the Imelda Padilla, the proposal, I never criticize anybody, but I wanted to deeply concern about the way how she treating people. Leadership requires listening to community, respecting their voices, honoring promises you made while running the office. Unfortunately, I have witnesses at the opposite. At your public event, you ignore even resident comments and even my comments when I send to you, and even sometime call the police, asking people removed. That's not the democracy what we learn, we in America. You're telling the public my activity against you or something election, that's wrong. I'm a medical field, I never wanted to be politician, but we in a crisis, that's why we have to ask simple things. Democracy, not what you want, democracy what we people need. Thank you.
Speaker, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'd like to just note that Councilperson Lee was actually paying attention and looking at the public speaker, so maybe some of the rest of you might want to pay attention to that. Words are cheap. You are all good speakers, but actions and votes speak louder and yield more life consequences. It is your actions that affect our lives and our futures, the futures of people who you work for, futures that are more important than your political aspirations. We can no longer afford to fund your failed policies. Los Angeles infrastructure can no longer afford them either. Councilwoman Padilla, Sun Valley cannot lose their metro stop in exchange for yet another homeless shelter. For God's sake and ours, stop forcing us to fund your homeless industrial complex for the sake of the homeless and the rest of our community. Thank you.
Council President, all the names have been called for public comment.
All right, we've called all names. Thank everybody who came out to speak with us. Mr. Clerk, before we go to items, I want to yield the floor to Councilmember Padilla.
Colleagues, well, one of the, I guess I'm very lucky, right? Today that you're all at Council District 6, you kind of got a glimpse of the sort of things that are going on in the 6th District, but I did, it's not usually traditional for us to speak, right? Right after the public comment directly, but it's an interesting week because this week I went on a podcast where I defended this council's position on opposing SB 79, where I talked about, we don't like SB 79 because we want to be able to engage with the community on the things that we bring to our backyard, right? We appreciate local control. We work on the negotiations. We work on the compromise during this emergency of the homeless crisis. So it's our job, right? It's our job to be the compromisers between the NIMBYs and the YIMBYs. That was the whole basis of that interview that is now going viral. To me, that's my job, finding the compromise. So to everyone that came today, you know, as I've said before, we're working under an emergency, and there are some things that as a councilmember I have control over during the emergency and some that I just do not. For those who actually attended the public spaces where we talked about the ED1 proposal in Lake Balboa, and to those who also productively engaged with us on the conversation of the Tiny Homes Project in Sun Valley, you know, this is, the Tiny Homes is interim. You're not going to lose the MetroLink Station. We've talked about it. Also, when it comes to the ED1 in Lake Balboa, it's a private property, it's coming with the emergency order. It is a conversation that we are trying to now help those who are productively engaging to also engage with the mayor's office about it. And related to the metro lot, that's different. The metro lot is public land. We have already started engagement with the focus group. Some people were, a lot of people were invited from Lake Balboa and some people rejected the invitation. But for those who did attend, we are beginning a process to bring something that the community of Lake Balboa is content with. And also, because it was brought up, I want to clarify the rumor. There's not going to be an RV lot coming to that corner where people are living in the RVs. If you want the true details, my team is here to give the truth behind it. But again, I wanted to just talk to my colleagues because I know we're all going through it. We're getting so much pressure to build the housing, but we don't want the pressure to come from Sacramento. We want to engage with our communities, and this is just me telling the community that came to talk today, the conversations are not over. Thank you so much for coming. I worked with the council president to bring the meetings back here so that you have this opportunity, so thank you for coming, but let's continue to talk and be productive because we have to meet somewhere in the middle. That's it. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Council. You do not get to respond. You are disrupting the meeting. You've been warned. If you do not stop disrupting the meeting, you will be removed. That is your first and last warning, sir. All right, Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Mr. President, the council may now consider item four, call special by Councilmember Rodriguez for comments.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Colleagues, in the early stages of the emergency order, the quarterly reports that we were receiving from the CAO's office made it clear that the data being provided was not fully reflected or reflected the intended purpose and benefits of the emergency order. There was a number of blank spaces in terms of what was being provided or resolved as a result of the emergency order from the very early days and the inception of the emergency order adoption. And while we remain in a state of emergency, which I have continued to vote against, we still lack the clarity on the full scope of what the emergency has accomplished. This report highlights CARE, CARE+ operations, as well as the vehicle dwelling operations, both which operate independently of the emergency declaration. So I want to underscore that. This council had long been engaged in helping to resolve encampments, doing RV operations in conjunction with the CAO's office, and doing CARE and CARE+ operations with our Bureau of Sanitation. Those operations occur independent and preexisted the emergency declaration. So I don't know if this was the inference of this report to intend to suggest that both CARE and CARE+ operations, as well as the CAO RV operations are in some part a function of the emergency declaration, because that is not accurate. And yet, the report suggests that it in fact is. I just want to be clear, especially for the public that is here in attendance, to underscore the fact that this is efforts that were adopted and pursued and implemented by this council, led by this council, long preceding the emergency declaration. So I want to be clear because facts matter, and no one gets to conflate the accomplishments of a declaration of emergency that are in fact pre-existing or operate independent of the emergency. So presenting them as outcomes associated with the emergency declaration, for me, represents a falsehood that we shouldn't pretend is fact. And it's for that reason that I'm raising these issues. I want to make sure that everyone understands that we have to very clearly delineate what is being accomplished or delivered as a result of the emergency order, and it shouldn't conflate the results of work that preexisted or will continue absent the emergency declaration. So I just want to be really clear about that and was not, you know, I continue to see issues associated with the reports coming back with the HEAs. This is one that we were concerned with how it was inferred and suggested. It is as if this is a function of accomplishment of this emergency declaration, which it is not. So while homelessness, I understand and am committed to being alongside with you in addressing this crisis as it is today, it doesn't require us to operate under emergency order and surrendering our oversight with this process. So again, colleagues, I will remain a no vote on these reports as well as the emergency declaration, and I'm eager for us to engage in a much more robust conversation around how we can proceed in both achieving the oversight, the fiscal prudence and accountability associated with this work, and making sure that we can facilitate greater results on our streets in a manner that we are all comfortable with. So I will be registering another no vote. Thank you.
All right, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item five, call special by Councilmember Rodriguez, for which amended motion 5A, Rodriguez Bloomingfield, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. So colleagues, I wanted to take a moment to share the intent behind the amendment I introduced in response to the CAO's report on the county's establishment of the ECRC. When this item came before H&amp;H Committee, the CAO provided an overview of the work that the county has done to set up the ECRC. From that discussion, what I understood, the CAO's role in helping the city coordinate with the county in order to better leverage the resources they are offering to support our operations. Now, I will just say, in my district, we have actually conducted a couple of operations in cooperation with the county and the ECRC, and I have to be honest, it's been effective. It's worked. But what allows this process to really function well is not for us to duplicate our efforts, but for us to figure out how we can coordinate these efforts to be more effective without anybody crossing over in their lane. And I believe this is something that we have to work on developing further. The amendment I introduced today is meant to address the gap, creating a clearer framework for collaboration with the county as they are standing up these operations. It requests that the CAO, CLA, and LAHD tell us how the city and county can jointly use their resources to support daily homeless operations, whether that's outreach, cleanups, or housing placements. And I'm hoping that this report could also provide recommendations on how we can better share the information, coordinate projects, and eliminate duplicative outreach efforts so that services are delivered more efficiently. so that services are delivered more efficiently and effectively. If the county is offering us the ability to leverage their resources, I think we got to take them up on it. This amendment is about building a two-way collaboration with the county as they are standing up these new efforts in their operations for encampment resolutions, so that together the city and the county, preferably without another introduction of another middleman, can better serve our shared constituents and ensure that services are not just available but delivered in the most effective way possible. So just to better provide some clarity, colleagues, you know, when we stood up, for example, I use, I use this example with my staff, when we stood up the utility cutoff for cannabis regulations, we didn't assign that one responsibility just to LAPD. It was LAPD in concert with DWP, in concert with Building and Safety, and DCR, for everybody to do their respective roles and to do it correctly. The idea here is that we should each be working on helping to address the concerns as it affects each of us, whether it's the county with respect to their teams that can help place people appropriately in the housing solution that meets their needs, depending on their acuity or mental health status, and allows us to still roll in with CARE+ or CARE operations to help clean up these areas. This is about a coordinated approach in a manner that helps us resolve these issues. And I know it works because when I first piloted a large-scale encampment resolution back in 2020, I did it in partnership with Sheila Kewell at the time. We each rolled in with our resources in a manner that was coordinated, not obstructing one another, but working together. And that was effective. So as the county continues to stand up these resources, this is an opportunity for us to reflect on how we can augment that work, not tripping over each other, but coordinating with each other. And so I'm hoping this report will help identify the path forward that we can make this a functional partnership with the county going forward. So I ask for your aye vote on my amendment. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
The council may now vote on item five as amended by amended motion five A. Rodriguez Blumenfeld.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting or referral.
They are posted and referred. Announcements, members? Any announcements, Mr. McCosker?
How'd you know? How'd you guess? Mr. President and colleagues, I am really excited, as I'm sure you all are as well, that this weekend is, we'll be celebrating Labor Day. It's not just a three-day weekend, it is the Labor Day holiday. And I want to invite everybody to join the L.A. Long Beach Harbor Labor Coalition on Monday for the, our 46th annual Labor Day Parade, picnic, and rally. This year's theme is "Labor Unions Fighting for a Better Tomorrow." It's important now, more than ever, to stand in support of our labor partners on a day that recognized the history of the labor movement in the United States. As we all know, Labor Day, labor, organized labor, provided the 40-hour work week, the abolition of child labor, paid family medical leave, the implementation of numerous safety regulations, many of which are at risk today. The Labor Day festivities in Wilmington will begin with a press conference at 8:00 a.m. at the intersection of Broad and E., which is also the start of the parade. It's going to be led by Larry Betergon. Larry, great guy. He's the chair of the L.A. Long Beach Harbor Labor Coalition, and this is really big deal. It will feature, that press conference and our parade will feature the National AFL-CIO President Liz Shuler, Yvonne Wheeler, of course, President of our L.A. County Fed, and Lorena Gonzalez, President of the California Federation of Labor Unions. So we have leadership at the national and the state and the local level. We will have a number of other, of course, leaders, siblings within the House of Labor who will be there. After the press conference, we will be, everyone sort of assembles, it's going to be the biggest one yet. We're going to have tens of thousands of folks that are convening in and around the Harbor area. And we will start the parade on time at 10:00 a.m. in Wilmington, at that same intersection where the press conference began. The labor march goes up Avalon and then turns right and heads to the beautiful Banning Park, and we'll get there around noon. That's how big the parade is. It's a short distance, but it'll take us a couple hours to get up there. And at the park, we have the rally. Everyone's familiar with the big rally, and we're going to introduce the siblings within the House of Labor. We're going to make sure that elected officials are called out, and it's family-friendly, and as I always say, it's free. Make sure you come on out and enjoy Banning Park, enjoy the parade, and let's celebrate Labor Day, putting our labor sisters and brothers front and center. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. I will certainly be there on Monday, joining you, Mr. McCosker, and it is a great time. And bring some candies because the kids, the kids love it. They have their buckets. Well, thank you, Council President. Today I rise to recognize the 55th anniversary of the Chicano Moratorium, which cultivated, which cultivate, culminated on August 29th, 1970, when tens of thousands of Chicanos marched through east Los Angeles to demand an end to the Vietnam War. As folks know, during this era, there was so much activism from SNCC, COR, you know, so many folks, and the Brown Berets and the Latino movement certainly played their part in this very, you know, interesting time in our country's history. We know that a generation of Chicanos across Southern California were fed up with the disproportionate number of Mexican-Americans who were drafted and killed overseas, something that certainly the black community felt the same, many of the same feelings at that time. And while we, while we were out in Vietnam fighting for, you know, our so-called freedom of America, we were here being treated as second-class citizens. So what began as a peaceful demonstration was met with violence by the Sheriff's Department, who fired tear gas, beat protesters with clubs, and killed three people, including legendary journalist Ruben Salazar, who was killed with a tear gas projectile. Fifty-five years letters, fifty-five years later, the lessons of the Chicano Moratorium remain as urgent as ever. In just the last three months, we've seen tear gas used, protesters being beat up, and we have masked federal agents operating in our neighborhoods bragging about kidnapping our family members and also using tear gas themselves. That is why, to honor this anniversary, I will be joining Councilmember Hernandez to kick off Latino Heritage Month with the Viva la Resistencia Bridge Art Gallery opening this Tuesday, September 2nd. And thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez, for leading it this year. And lastly, I also want to just continue to thank Councilmember Hernandez for leading this year's El Grito Celebration. I did it last year, and I know it's no easy task for you and for your entire staff, so thank you for doing this on a very, in a year that's even, 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 that's been even more busy than usual. And with that, I want to say thank you for indulging me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soto Martinez. Councilmember Hernandez? No, Councilmember Roman?
I had a brief announcement. I just wanted to invite everyone to Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park on Saturday, tomorrow, for a pool party from 2:00 to 5:00. There's going to be food, there's going to be a band playing, there will be obviously the pool, and it's going to be quite a scorcher, so I'm hoping that families can come and cool off. If you're planning to come, make sure you RSVP at cd4.lacity.gov if you can, just so that we can have enough food for everybody. So please join us tomorrow at the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Aquatic Center for a Labor Day Pool Party. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. See adjourning motions to my left and adjourning motions to my right. Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, today I move that we adjourn in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day, which is marked this Sunday, August 31st, and is in honor of Tyler Shimosh, a bright, kind young man whose life was cut short by a fentanyl overdose at just 19-years-old. His passing in 2018 was a devastating loss for his family, his friends, and his community. But out of that grief has come a movement that's saving lives, changing laws across the country, and raising awareness everywhere. His story has inspired mothers and families across America who have lost children to fentanyl poisoning to join forces, to speak together, and to fight for change. Together, they're pushing forward legislation in Congress, building community education campaigns, and sounding the alarm that one pill or one line can kill. Their courage has brought a deeply personal face to a crisis too often described only in statistics. Today, we remember Tyler not just for the tragedy of his loss, but for the light of the movement he inspired, light which will shine into the Los Angeles skyline when City Hall is lit in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day this Sunday. Tyler was a son, a brother, a friend, and now a beacon for change. On behalf of District 5 and the city of Los Angeles, I extend our deepest condolences to the Shimosh family and our gratitude for their courage in speaking out. May Tyler's memory be a blessing, and may his legacy remind us of what's possible when even the greatest pain is channeled into purpose. Thank you.
Councilmember Roman?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, colleagues. I wanted to rise today to adjourn in memory of two beloved members of the Encino community, Robin Kaye and Tom DeLuca, whose lives were senselessly taken from us last month. Their passing has left an immeasurable void, not only for their family and friends, and we have Barry here from their family with us today, but for all of those who were fortunate enough to know them. Robin and Tom were partners in every sense of the word. They were deeply devoted to one another, to their community, and to the people and passions that filled their lives. Robin had a long and impactful career in the entertainment industry, and I'm sure you've seen parts of her career, where she left her indelible mark as the longest-tenured music supervisor on American Idol, where she was credited on more than 300 episodes. Through her work, she helped dozens of artists launch their music careers, including American Idol winners like Chris Allen, Nick Fradyani, and curated performances that reached millions of viewers around the world. Tom was a gifted recording artist and songwriter in his own right. He played with the Nashville-based band The Piggies, went on to record two solo albums, and also he wrote songs for some of the greatest rock musicians of the 1980s and 90s, including Diesel, Meredith Brooks, Molly Hatchet, Kid Rock. Since their passing, both Robin and Tom have been remembered and honored by colleagues and fans across the country, who felt the impact of their artistry even when they didn't know them personally. But beyond their impressive careers, what I heard most about Robin and Tom is how kind, generous, and dedicated they were to each other and to their community. Their love ran deep. Barry shared with my office that they had so many friends who weren't just friends, they were truly family. And they were family to their beloved pets as well, their bird Bogey, their 28-year-old tortoise, JoJo, and their dog Luca, whom they cherish deeply. In Encino, their loss has been felt deeply. In my office, it has been felt personally by staff who worked alongside Robin and Tom on neighborhood improvements. We saw firsthand their commitment to making their community better. Their murder leaves a painful and undeniable absence, but their memory will continue to guide and inspire us. Robin and Tom were deeply passionate about making Encino a more welcoming, safe, and connected place, and in their memory, we will continue that work together. Their legacy is one of love, generosity, and community spirit, and my hope is that it will live on in all of us, and I wanted to thank Barry for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Roman. Any other adjourning motions, members? All right, with that, we're adjourned. Happy Labor Day, everyone.